We'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Dan?
Mayor Scoog?
Present.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Councilmember Mallory, here.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Definitely here.
Councilmember Whiting?
I'm here.
And Councilmember Rooney is obviously absent this evening. We do have a quorum there.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next item. Discussion: Street name change Northern Arizona Suns. Norm, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The item you have before you tonight is for roadway name change for the Event Center. I think Councils are well aware that Event Center was built about a decade ago and the resident sports team there had the road access off of Gloucester Hill Road after them. Well, that team has now left, but of course, as you're well aware, we have a new basketball team, the Northern Arizona Suns, that occupies in our resident sports team. There has been great support that we should change the name since the old resident team is gone and we should change the name to Northern Arizona Suns Way. So there's been significant support in order to change the roadway name sign. Part of the official things we need to do is simple enough to change the name, but we do have to do a resolution that gets recorded at the county because roadway names are very official for 911 response and the like. But the item you have before you is just to make that official roadway name change to the new roadway that's being proposed as Northern Arizona Suns Way, which, as you can see over on the side, this is actually the replica of the roadway sign that will go up into the existing signage if approved tonight by Council. So I think we have some people in the audience that want to help support this particular action. So I'm going to call up Ashley Stovall. She's with the marketing group with Northern Arizona Suns to hopefully present a little more to support this item. Ashley, come on up.
Ashley, only 20 minutes.
Hi. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Ashley. I'm the general manager for business operations for the Northern Arizona Suns. With me tonight is Buckets, of course, wreaking havoc over there already. And also with us tonight is Stephen Fry, Michael White, and Jake Grossman, all from our front office. We're very excited tonight to be given the opportunity to have the road changed to the Naz Suns Way. We're very excited about that and appreciate the support from the community and from the town for that. Just a little bit about our team. As many of you are aware, back in April of 2016, the Phoenix Suns announced them moving their developmental league team from Bakersfield, California, to Prescott Valley, Arizona. Within our short two years, we've already seen four Gatorade call-ups to the NBA as well. We've also seen three of our coaches called up to the NBA also, including our head coach, Ty Ellis. So we definitely provide a great platform for growth as well. We're also very big in the community and our community outreach. We've just completed our inaugural Kids' Day game back in January, hosting 1,300 kids at our game. We also do various projects for the schools as well, for All-Star Student Achievers, providing them with complimentary tickets to Suns games as well. We certainly want to make sure that we're introducing them to a healthy and active lifestyle, so that's very important to us. We also make sure that we're supporting various local town events as well. We just recently purchased basketball jerseys for a local school, and so we went out there and participated with them, and we'll be hosting a clinic with them later this month also. Oh, Buckets. So we just wanted to take this time to thank everybody for having us out here, for supporting us. We've seen tremendous growth in our second season here in Prescott Valley. We certainly want to see that to continue to grow, to continue to see the support from our town. And so with that, I'd like to just close out with a traditional T-shirt toss. You can't go wrong with a T-shirt toss. You can't. So make sure that you have your eyes open, your hands up. You may get a T-shirt.
We're here.
We want to thank you guys very much for having us out for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashlyn, Stephen, Michael, all of you. Buckets?
Thank you, Buckets.
Oh, you can borrow one for us, too. Well, thank you.
You're the big cheese.
Thank you, Buckets.
Backpack. Okay. Well, thank you all for coming. Well, Buckets, you're welcome to stay up here, too, as long as there's no attorney. Okay. The next we have a presentation. Arizona Game and Fish Department Community Fishing Program. We have Scott and Matt.
Mayor, Council members, tonight with us are some esteemed colleagues from the Game and Fish Department. They are going to provide a presentation to you this evening, somewhat in light with what was presented to our Parks and Recreation Commission. This presentation and recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission is strongly for your consideration. Parks and Recreation Commission supports this opportunity that's being presented to us here at the town, and there are some members in the audience that are out there, too, are very favorable in regards to this opportunity. So with that, I'm going to turn it up to Scott Gorden, and as Matt's joining us also from Arizona Game and Fish Department.
Well, welcome, Scott, and welcome.
Thank you, Brian. Mayor Scoog, members of the Council, thank you so much for the opportunity. I see you have a very packed agenda tonight, so I'll do my best to blast through the presentation as quickly as I can so you can get on to some other business. So as Brian had mentioned, we had presented, well, even back before the Parks and Rec met in January. Matt Schmell, my esteemed colleague from the Kingman Office, I had met with City Manager Tarkowski and Deputy Manager Ryan Judy to discuss a proposed partnership that we felt would be mutually beneficial to both the department and the community with respect to fishing opportunities within Prescott Valley. In a nutshell, the department would really like to see, to improve and expand upon fishing opportunities within Prescott Valley. And the timing of this is particularly good because the community fishing program, which I manage out of the Phoenix office, is in a period of rapid expansion throughout the state. I'll give you some more background with respect to the program in the presentation here, but the timing of this is pretty good. So essentially, what we sort of envisioned initially as a partnership is something that would start with commitment to improve and expand upon fishing opportunities within Prescott Valley. And then we felt that that initial support could perhaps open doors down the road for some broader partnerships to focus on some other things. We know that the city's got a significant investment in operation and maintenance of Fane Lake and the dam in terms of vegetation removal, fishing access, fishing piers, docks, that sort of thing. And so there's also potential, if we have a partnership with the city, to expand upon that down the road. And maybe even branch into some other opportunities like off-highway vehicle operation, hunting or shooting sports, those types of things that may be of interest to the community. So as Brian mentioned, we presented this to the Parks and Rec Commission in January, and that was approved to move forward to the City Council. Just some real quick background about the community fishing program. It began over three decades ago, and back in the 1980s, the department recognized that most of the growth was within cities and towns. Most of the future growth was predicted within cities and towns. So we saw an opportunity to partner with many of the Parks and Recreation Departments, particularly those that had existing water features, that we could create fishing opportunities throughout the communities to benefit the people that reside there. So that's essentially how the program got started in 1985. It started out being called the Urban Fishing Program because it got started in Phoenix and Tucson, and later on... It wasn't until 2014 we actually rebranded and renamed the program to Community Fishing Program to reflect that we're moving into more rural communities. As it stands right now, we've got partnerships with 19 different communities. We've got 41 waters within the program. We recently added new waters in 2017 in Cholo and Mesa, and we've got several new fishing waters planned, some of which are in the Phoenix metro area and some of which are in rural areas like Thatcher, Mammoth, Kingman-Holbrook, so on and so forth. We've also got potential to add new waters within the communities where they actually already have water features such as Tempe, and we hope if with the Council's approval, Prescott Valley as well would be added to that list. So real quickly, the vision for the community fishing program has been to ensure that anglers essentially have easy access to fishing opportunities. Our goal that we embarked upon in 2015 was pretty bold, and it was to reach 200,000 anglers within at least 36 of the 91 incorporated communities within the state. As of 2015, we're about halfway there in terms of the number of anglers that we reach, and we've actually sort of expanded to include not just communities that are incorporated and have city councils and staff and that sort of thing, but broaden it to include other communities that don't have that, and so essentially public-private partnerships. The motto of the fishing program has been if the people can't get to the fish, we'll bring the fish to the people.
Sounds like a good idea.
And this is just a graph. I know it's tough to see probably for folks in the audience there, but since about 2013, we've virtually doubled the size of the program from 21 to 41 waters and from 11 communities to 19 communities. And as I mentioned, we just added waters within the communities of Cholo and Mesa, and you should have the community guidebooks sitting in front of you there, just for reference. So I use the term partnerships quite a bit, and so I thought I'd just talk a little bit about that and why we seek formal partnerships. Couple of the major reasons is, you know, to obtain fish costs a lot of money. The department does not have any warm water facilities. We buy or purchase all of our warm water fish, that's catfish, sunfish, bass, from private vendors from out of state, and that comes at a significant cost. Likewise, we do have six state hatcheries, all currently dedicated to production of trout, and we're struggling to meet demand just with that. So we're essentially maxed out on our trout production, and for most of the community fishing waters, we need to buy trout from out of state, which also costs a significant amount of money. So essentially, you know, we believe that fishing essentially complements the things that the cities are trying to achieve in terms of a benefit to the communities. Fishing is just an enhancement in that. Oftentimes, they start out as water features, but we really see these as a place to establish fishing opportunities so that, you know, people can bring their kids out fishing, and it's a safe, enjoyable, close-to-home experience for them. And essentially, we can go much further if we have partnerships. One of the big reasons we promote these partnerships is typically a lot of the stocking that occurs in what we call our regional waters is done periodically. You know, if money's available, for example, Fane Lake, a lot of times it's only stocked if and when we've got a sufficient budget to do that. Under a partnership, a formal partnership, we establish dedicated times and numbers of stockings so that that's a commitment we have to the community to ensure that we've got those fish coming in on a regular basis. So instead of just, you know, as money's available, we're committed to that through a partnership. And then obviously, just experience proves that these partnerships with communities work. We've had several of our communities in the program for well over 30 years, including Scottsdale, Tempe, Tucson, and so forth. So just a little bit of background about the fish. We focus primarily on three main species: channel catfish, rainbow trout, bluegill sunfish. We do channel catfish during the warmer months. We do trout during the cooler months, and we usually do bluegill sunfish once a year in the spring. We used to do a lot more bass stocking, but as I mentioned, the costs, you know, got pretty extensive. So we still do largemouth bass stocking once in a while, but it's usually, you know, if we can find a good deal out there, and so it's not something that we do every single year. The amounts of fish that we put into the lakes is kind of depends on the size of the lake. We usually stock in pounds, you know, number of pounds per acre, that sort of thing. So we have a formula that we pretty much standardize through most of our community We've got a few different management strategies, but the two main ones, we call our core waters, which are stocked pretty intensively. That's the waters that have been in the program for well over 30 years, and we stock, as I mentioned, catfish during the warm months, trout during the cooler months, and, you know, at least one sunfish stocking. So for example, our core waters are stocked every couple of weeks. The graph on the bottom there shows sort of a strategy for our expansion waters. We recently actually increased the number of stockings that we do in those waters from six to nine to try to improve upon, you know, fishing opportunities in these expansion waters. We have a few waters that we focus, you know, have sort of specialized focus, like, for example, Pace and the Green Valley Lakes, we only stock trout in there. We've got one of our recently added waters in Ash Fork, which we do just catfish. And then we're sort of working on, most of our waters are in the Phoenix-Tucson metro, or we've got waters in Yuma, which are typically in the warmer parts of the state. So as we expand into new areas, including potentially Prescott Valley, we're trying to develop an upper elevation strategy that would accommodate for stockings throughout the summer months, where typically we cease stocking in Phoenix. We don't stock in from mid-June through the end of, well, actually to about mid-September just because, you know, it's just too hot to transport the fish, and oftentimes, the lake temperatures are too hot, too. So we're looking at a strategy, something like that, for Fane. So I'll jump quickly into the proposal for Prescott Valley. So currently, Fane is what we call, as I mentioned, a state-managed fishery. We currently stock it with rainbow trout exclusively from our Page Springs Hatchery, and we do periodic stockings of catfish. On average, we do about 500 pounds a year at this point. And as you're aware, the Yavapai Lakes, which also, I guess is recalled to the urban forest park, is not stocked with any fish at this point. So under a partnership to improve and expand, what we're proposing is for Fane Lake, we would still do all of the rainbow trout stockings that we do right now, but in addition to that, we would bring in fish that we buy from our out-of-state vendors. These are typically larger fish that average about 3/4 of a pound in size, and we would bring those in at least four times a year in Fane Lake. Now, Yavapai Lake, at this point, would receive primarily those larger fish from the vendors, and potentially, you know, if we chose to at some point, we may, you know, divert some of the Page Springs stockings into Yavapai, too, to, you know, enhance that sort of as-needed. If fishing's really, really good at Fane Lake, and we want to give it a little boost from Page Springs Rainbow Trout, we could do that as well. As far as channel catfish, Fane would get four stockings of those, the first of which would be what we call a sort of a double stocking, just to get the fishing season really kick-started at about 320 pounds per acre. So it'd be a pretty big stocking. It'd be, you know, by my calculations, about 325% increase from an average year stocking. And then Yavapai Lakes would receive four stockings of catfish per year. Sort of graphically, the column on the left shows the rainbow trout that go into Fane Lake from our Page Springs Hatchery. Under this proposal, we would continue to do that. In the center column there, those are the larger trout that we would bring in from our independent vendors, and we would stock those in both Fane and Yavapai Lakes. And then the column on the right there shows the channel catfish stocking. We would focus on doing that during the warmer months, June through September. The first stocking would be a fairly large one, as I mentioned, to kick that season off. So we think that really gives a pretty good boost to fishing here in the Prescott Valley area, and we think that, or we hope, that folks would be pretty excited about, you know, the number of fish that would come under this type of proposal. So as I mentioned, you know, some of the benefits, to reiterate, under a formalized agreement, intergovernmental agreement, we would guarantee stockings as opposed to just doing periodic ones. Another big one is that in the event that there is a need to shut down one or the other lakes, I know Fane sometimes will flood out or get, you know, have some problems with, you know, clearing debris. So if we ever had that, there'd be a second location within the valley that we could, you know, direct anglers to go to during those time periods. If we ever had to do maintenance when there's, you know, periods where there was maintenance on the dam was necessary, there'd be a place for anglers to go to take that pressure off. So that's a big benefit. The bottom line is, you know, more fish, more trout, and bigger trout, and lots more catfish, and as I mentioned, we just hope that, you know, that would be a great way to improve and expand upon these opportunities. So from a cost perspective, right now, the fish that come out of our Page Springs Hatchery roughly costs the department about $23,000 a year. Under this proposal, getting the rainbow trout from vendors there, we'd be looking at about $7,300 in total. That's what it would cost to buy those fish. Likewise, the catfish that we would get from the vendors would roughly translate to about In total, between the two lakes, there would be about almost $50,000 worth of fish going in. What we focus on when we develop these partnerships with the communities is we ask usually for a 25% contribution of just the cost of fish. And so for this particular example, we would just be talking about the new fish, which would be those rainbows and catfish from vendors, which you can see under the subtotal would be about $24,000. So the cost to the city would be roughly $6,000 per year under a formalized partnership to do something like that. So and then within a formalized partnership, we really don't ask a lot more things than, you know, the typical things that you're already doing out there. You're already doing park maintenance. In terms of managing the lake, that is the, you know, responsibility of the owning entity. If there's a need to control vegetation or something like that, that would be, you know, the responsibility of the city. We provide signage to our partners. That comes at no expense to the city, and all we ask is that the Parks and Rec staff, if they happen to see damage, notify us. If there's graffiti on the signs, you know, try to wipe it off. If not, you know, we can replace signage. That comes at no expense to the city. We just do that as part of the agreements. Another part of that is just allowing us access, if there's gates, locked gates, those types of things. Sometimes we do our stockings at odd times of the night, depending on when our trucks roll through. So if there are gates or, you know, certain things, we would just ask that we get provided keys and/or, you know, just give us contact that we could, you know, call and get access into the lakes. We ask that just, you know, the city do what they can to promote fishing for families within the community, and I think that pretty much covers everything. We would, you know, set fishing regulations. Every time that we come out and do a stocking, we do water quality, and we share that with the city officials each and every time that we go out and stock. We often will set up fishing clinics in partnership with the city. So if you guys want, you know, a particular, if you guys want to set up a clinic, you can just, you know, contact us, and we'll do our best to help out with poles, bait, no cost to the city, and, you know, be glad to help get that implemented. That's just an example of what the signage looks like. And then within the, one of the signs we call a kiosk, there's a black box that we typically will put what we call a community fishing bulletin. Usually over a couple of weeks, we update it with, you know, timely information, what's going on in the community fishing program. We also keep an updated stocking schedule so that people at least have an idea when the fish are coming in to the community lakes. So as part of this process, we need to do, the department, us, we need to do what we call an environmental assessment checklist. I've already started that process and submitted that internally. It's kind of akin to a NEPA that a federal agency does. And much like seeking approval from the Council, I need to approach our commission to also seek permission to enter into an agreement. The agreements we typically do for five-year durations, just simply because from a cost perspective, it's easier for us to sort of try and guesstimate what those costs would be for five years, so that's typically the duration of our agreements. And then, once those are all in place, we could, you know, commence stocking of fish. And then from an invoice standpoint, we usually just invoice at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is, you know, usually July.
Larry, you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor and Council, if it is your desire and at your direction, we will go ahead and build in the anticipated cost for this in the new fiscal year. In addition to that, once an agreement is prepared, then we'll bring that back for Council action, you know, based on the reaction that Council members have.
Good. Any other, Marty?
Yeah, first of all, I think this is a great program. Fishing and kids, it's just a natural act. What are the fees for fishing and what ages does it apply to? And how does that money get distributed?
So in 2014, the department embarked upon a complete overhaul of its license structure. And one of the changes that we did was we created a 365-day license. So whenever a person desires to buy a license, it's good for 365 days. Basically, for children under 10 years of age, and this information is available within the community guidebook here on page four. There is a table there. It sort of has regulations and license information at a glance. Kids under the age of 10 don't need a license to fish. Kids aged 10 to 17, we instituted what we call a youth license. It's basically a hunt-and-fish combo license, and the cost of that is only $5. Above age 17, 18, and over, there is a variety of options. People that choose just to fish within community waters, we've maintained a sort of a community fishing license. fishing license. That would be good for all of the locations within this guidebook. That's at $24. And then, you know, it goes up from there. If you want a statewide fishing license, that would be $37. And a statewide hunting and fish combo license would be $57. So that revenue goes into the department's, good question, and that is used in combination with what we call sport fish wildlife restoration dollars. These are federal dollars that go into a pot. Essentially, it's a tax, an excise tax on fishing equipment, fishing tackle, fishing poles, motor bolt fuels, those types of things. So it's essentially a user-paid system. The people that are benefiting from this are the people that are paying for it and are using, you know, and engaged within fishing. So much like these partnerships, we ask for a 25% contribution. That's essentially the same agreement we have with the Fish and Wildlife Service. So it's a 25%, 75% match. So we use a lot of the dollars that we use to buy fish to stock within community waters as well as other regional waters is in, department money is in combination with federal aid dollars.
Just two quick follow-up questions.
I just wanted to add one quick thing. Currently, right now, if they want to fish Fane Lake, the option is the general fishing license or the hunt, fish combo. If we enter into this agreement, they'll now have the option of using a less expensive community fishing license.
Okay, like I said, two quick questions. For children under 10, you said there's no fee. Do they have to be accompanied by a licensed fisherman? And the second one is, I'm sure this information is available online. Could you give us the website? Thank you.
Yeah, with respect to the first question, no. They do not need a, an adult present, a licensed adult. That's true on the hunting side, but not on the fishing side. So kids could ride their bikes down to the lake and go fishing without, without parents, you know, if they wanted that, to do that. In terms of getting more information, we have our website, which we've done quite a bit of work to over the past couple of years, and it's www.AZGFD.gov. AZGFD is in Arizona Game and Fish Department.gov. That's, you can get a ton of information. And folks that are interested in buying a license, that's another place that they can get it, is buying the license online. You can also do it, if you've got a smartphone, you could buy a license while you're standing on the edge of the, of the lake.
An app for that, right?
I'm sorry?
All right, got a question?
Well, I'm looking out here at the room, and I'll bet there's a lot of little children out here who've never got to go fishing. And now they can go fishing right in town limits. And I'm lucky, I grew up with three brothers, and they couldn't get rid of me. I tagged along. Even though I was the oldest, I bugged them, and they taught me to fish. And I know the joys of that and the advantages of it, and I'm really excited that we have this opportunity. I hope that the devil isn't in the details and that we can accomplish a happy ending for all these children here.
Absolutely.
Rick, you got a comment? No? Any other? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention as well, I support this because I think it is a benefit to our community, and obviously partnership with the Arizona Game and Fish is, I think, a natural thing. We've had our fishing holes, if you want to call it that, for a while, and this is a great opportunity, I think, to expand that and to invest in that as well. So I'm looking forward to that. And I did see your presentation before the, I said Planning Zone, but it was the Parks and Recs, and I think you were here that, that same night. And a little longer, a little more thorough, but I think it's a great program, and I'm hoping that we can participate and get involved with that as well.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry, more comments?
No, I just wanted to thank Mayor and the council for the opportunity to come and present to you.
We appreciate you and Matt. Thank you for coming up. Is the council agreeable to putting it on the agenda for next week?
It's done.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, if you'll come up to the microphone.
To reintroduce myself, I'm Andy Sinclair. I'm one of the Prescott Valley Art and Culture Commissioners. I love to fish. I'm a river rat. I fished in the winter, I fished in the snow, I fished in the rain. I see this as a great opportunity for the community. Fane Park is a great place where people come, not only for fishing, but also the hiking, just communing with nature. In addition, I see an awful lot of artists over there, both photography and painters Fane Lake is a great place to fish. One problem is that many people who come into town from Phoenix or from Scottsdale, some of the other areas, Flagstaff, may not know the lake is there because there's no signage on State Road 69 pointing to the lake itself. Once you get off, you could see that the lake is there. But I've had many people from out of town say, "We didn't know the lake was there." But they loved the place, they loved to fish there, they loved to commune there. I also see this as a great economic development opportunity. A lot of people are driving down 69, possibly headed over to Prescott, possibly to the lakes over there. If we had signage, we could get more people coming to the lake because they actually know it's there. People come here and they spend money in the hotels, they spend money in the sporting goods stores. As a matter of fact, Sportsman's Warehouse is represented here tonight. One of the great places to buy fishing gear here in the community itself. They buy gas, they buy food. So the idea of a program like this expanding in the community would be a great economic development asset to the community itself. So council, Mr. Mayor, I would encourage you to support this initiative with the Arizona Department of Fish and Game.
Thank you, Andy. We appreciate that. Council agreeable? Anybody? No? No, no. Oh, Rick?
No, fine.
Mike?
Yeah, I wanted to mention too, I know when I, I watched the other presentation, that there was a thought about having signage on 69 as we do down the road in Prescott and Lynx Lake. So I think that's something, I don't know how we would pursue that, but I think it's a great idea, and it would lend itself then to directing people who are interested in getting there.
Yeah, that's a great point. One of the other programs in our department is we have a heritage grant program, and that would probably fit right into the types of things that we try to fund in terms of getting people outdoors. So the process essentially involves a city entity or a private entity or whatever applying for, you know, a particular need. In this case, signage to be placed on the highway to steer, you know, folks into the park. And I think something like that would stand a great chance of getting funding, particularly because we have actually created a category for community fishing waters and improving access to community fishing waters. So I think that would fit really nicely under a heritage grant application.
Mary, you got a comment?
I just wanted to say that anything that encourages families getting together, you know, outside, enjoying all that this area has to offer is absolutely great. Partnerships is what makes everything actually happen in this area. And I see Buckets there just shaking his head, yes, he's for this. So yeah, I say that this is a fantastic idea, and I look forward to seeing this summer filled with lots of kids and lots of families.
Rick, you got a comment?
Well, I appreciate the fact that there may be funding for highway signs, but in the case of Highway 69, we also have the issue of the fact that it belongs to the state of Arizona. And so there are a lot of issues involved in putting signs along that highway. So it might help the fact that you're part of the state, that you can help us get some signs, because we have a terrible time ourselves trying to get signs put up along the road. So maybe you can help us do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's figure out who the person is, and let's take him fishing.
Yeah. It's a great idea. I'll second that.
Any other comments? Scott, good job. And the council is ready to have it put on our ballot, on our voting meeting.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have another exciting one. Presentation, I Love PV Poster Contest Awards and Recognition. Brian, you are up. Buckets, you're welcome to stay there.
All right, well, besides young budding fisher persons? People? People? We also have some young artisans in the crowd tonight with us this evening. So we're going to get started, and I'm going to go through my quick list here, and we're going to divide this up into two groups. We have our honorable mention group and then our placement group. So if you would, pretty please, keep your ears on. I'm going to call out names, and then as I do, if you would come forward, I'm going to ask you to hold on to your artwork for display and then also your certificates, okay? All right, here we go. Honorable mention, Mr. Charlie Van Loe. Ms. Alexis Finley. Leila Andeverdi? I apologize if I've messed this up. Madeline Deluna. Sierra Miller. Emily Brooks. Riley Shoup. Chloe Fox. Chloe Zawak. Adam Powers. Grant Shadot. Megan Wilkman. Lily Grantham. And Ethan Thurston. If you would all come forward. These are some fabulous entries that came to us. The I Love PV Poster Contest was split into multiple age categories. We had second grade and under, third to sixth, seventh to eighth, and ninth to 12th grade, along with adult divisions. So we had several hundred items come through the door for their entries. These are the lucky top 10 folks that are joining with us up here tonight, and they've done a phenomenal job in doing that. We had a four-person panel journeying all of the artwork that was with us tonight, and these are some of our successful winners there. So let's give them a big round of applause.
Brian, we want to see them. Hold them up so we can see them.
Oh, how nice. Wow.
Thank goodness.
Very nice.
Yes, I know. We're going to kill them.
How about that? Good, good job.
Yeah, they're pretty close, too.
All right, I'm going to break these up into two groups. So I'm going to ask for the second grade and under and the third to sixth grade group. These are going to be in order of third through first place for second grade. We're seeking Ms. Yasmin Martinez, if she can join us. All right, in second place, Brooklyn Aston. Is Brooklyn with us? All right, there she is. And then in first place, Bliss Tyson. All right, again, these are our first through third winners for second grade and under. Right?
Very well done.
Very nice.
Yes, I see why you're a winner's.
All right, Mom and Dad, Grandma and Grandpa, if you would, on the backside of each of our first, second, and third place winners, there's a gift certificate on the back that you can redeem for art supplies and all kinds of other goodies, okay? So make sure you pay attention on the backside. All right, in third grade to sixth grade, our third place winner is Haley Dalpitt? Dalps? Did I get that? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that help. Second place, Zoe Kane Reed. Zoe with us? There she is. And in first place, Trinity Hannah. And in first place, Trinity Hannah.
Wow, a lot of-
Nice job.
Lot of detail.
Good job.
Very nice. Very nice.
Good job.
Good job.
All right, in seventh and eighth grade, in second place, we have Stella Edwards. And in first place, David Lighthead.
Very nice.
Very nice. Thank you.
Not for sure if we had a fan of fishing here on that one, so.
That kid.
Okay, ninth grade, too.
Okay, in our ninth to 12th grade category, in second place, Ms. Cassidy Blake. Unfortunately, they will not be attending this evening, if I'm correct, unless something has changed, all right? And in first place, McKenna Farrell.
Go ahead, Mary, hold it up, there you go.
And standing in for Cassidy will be Councilwoman Mallory.
That is really nice. Good job.
I hope you're really proud of me.
All right, and now our adult division, in second place, Wendy Tillman. Is Wendy with us? There she is. All right, and in first place, Shirley Lighthead. My goodness.
The kind of all that detail.
Oh my goodness, so is that. I love that.
How at the Moon Saloon, yeah.
Oh, thank you for picking the library.
I've been informed that there's a matter of genetics in the seventh and eighth grade, all the way through the adult division. So, Ms. Shirley is David's teacher as well as a grandmother, so that's pretty cool. Congratulations to all of our winners this evening. If I may, Mayor, I think there's time for a refreshment break, so I will turn the floor over to you, sir.
There is time for a refreshment break. We're going to break for refreshment and will reconvene after about seven minutes.
There you go, so interact with their art-
Usage statistics, Brian, that sounds like something for you.
Well, thank you very much for that. I would like to apologize to our members of the audience, those that were here in attendance tonight, receiving their accolades for their poster contest. One of the items I failed to mention, not only to them but to you, was the simple fact that we are retaining this artwork. It will be on display here at the library for 30, 45 days. In addition to that, we're also going to take those elements of artwork and we're going to implement that into posters and other informational services, all related to Prescott Valley and the upcoming 40th anniversaries that will be occurring throughout the calendar year. So, it's be very well-integrated into everything that we do in celebrating our young people and their artistic talents in the celebration of Prescott Valley, so kudos to all.
Appreciate that, Brian.
I'm wondering, Ryan, if we shouldn't think about having a fishing fest as part of our 40th?
Actually, it is built into that. When we get into the month of October, with some fabulous fun down at Fane Park with an event that will be titled Gold Fever Day, that will be part of the fun and festivity that we will be taking place with, so yes, ma'am.
I heard about Gold Fever, but I didn't hear about fishing, so I wanted to be sure.
Yes, ma'am, not a problem. We can do that, as they say. All right, so we're here talking a little bit, giving a little bit of background information in regards to the fun, fitness, and families that utilize our community, and specifically in regards to parks and recreation. So, we're going to give you some data here, have some discussion, review pictorially some of the cool things that are out there and all the fun that people have. A large amount of this data can be found in a presentation and a document that council has reviewed in the past and has been done on an annual basis from our Parks and Recreation as well as our Art and Culture Commissions. So this is a downloadable document that folks can take a peek at, too. A lot of the big highlights that really, I think, set the tone for this discussion, as well as for the department, is the simple fact that the community directly engages with the town via the Parks and Recreation Department. And this really resonates not only in our user numbers, these are known user numbers. I can't fathom what the unknown user numbers are that are out there. But we literally have almost 300,000 people that are known users, that are using our programs, our facilities, our parks, all of those fun things that are out there. And they are contributing back to our community. That contribution is coming back almost to a tone of $140,000 a year. They're reinvesting, whether that be through volunteer, labor, donations, cash contributions, in-kind materials, services, all of those types of things. But not only are they utilizing, but they're contributing, too, for the betterment, expansion, and development of our Parks, Recreation, Arts and Cultural Services that we have here in the town. Our department is very diverse, and we have quite a few different divisions. We're going to highlight a few of those, so on your screen. We're going to talk about a variety of different activities throughout the night. Athletic focuses on volleyball, kickball, softball. We also support a lot of youth activities, whether that be soccer, football, basketball, baseball, softball as well.
It's pickleball.
Pickleball, that is also one of those things. We do that through some of our special events. And a few nights ago, council also entered into a development agreement, a donation development agreement. So we're going to be looking at the community, again, investing back into itself in regards to courts and those kinds of things. And we're looking at those going in at Antelope Park. And hopefully, within the next year or two years, sooner the better, of course. And we all do those types of things. We have quite a few athletic teams. Our numbers are either very solid or trending upwards, so we're very excited about that over the course of the last two years in all of those different activities that we have going on out there, and as well as their participation. Those numbers are trending or holding tone with the averages over the course of the year. Lots of fun that we have out there. You see here our three-on-three basketball program and those trends and activities going on as well. In doing such, let me see, I'm going to grab a couple of quick notes here. And where did it disappear on me? All right, in addition to the programs and services that we have going on, again, as I mentioned, we do a lot of support work with our local youth services, baseball, softball, football, all of those different activities, as well as soccer. Some of the also exciting things that we have done over the years, we've hosted pitch-hit-and-run baseball programs with Major League Baseball. We've had pump-pass-and-kick with the NFL. We've had state champions come out of those programs that had advanced on to either the conference championships or the divisional championships within those respected professional sports. In addition to that, we've hosted a number of different athletic tournaments, whether it be adult softball, youth soccer tournaments. Youth softball tournaments, we've done them in partnerships with agencies such as Yavapai College and then as well as our neighbor community, the city of Prescott. In doing so, just in last year, with those youth tournaments that I had mentioned, we're estimating local economic impact through those tournaments alone at $1.5 million coming back into the community. So, a lot of investment, a lot of desire. A lot of the adult tournaments that we're securing are actually coming out of the valley. And they're coming through a variety of times throughout the year. So it's just not to escape the heat. They value coming up here, playing on our fields. Larry and I both heard this last year in hosting the national tournament with folks coming from all throughout the U.S. in regards to this being one of the best facilities that they've played on, not only in the year but in their playing experiences. So we take great pride in that here in Prescott Valley, that we're doing those things just for our local citizenry. And folks coming from outside of our community praise the opportunities that they have and they are rather jealous about those types of things. All right, in addition to that, our aquatics program is pretty exciting. We host a number of different activities here at Mountain Valley Splash. Our general attendance numbers continue to do very, very well. Just this last year, we saw 12,405 folks come through the door in our open swim program with an additional almost 8,500 in swim lessons and a record-setting 1,500 on our family nights that we have there at Mountain Valley Splash. In addition to that, we have a variety of health and fitness programming, including lap swim, therapy swims, 50-plus aerobics, and adult aerobics. And going out there, and we're going very strong in support of all of those fine festive programs and services. Our Arts and Culture Division is a very exciting and diverse program itself. And in doing so, we provide programs so that we're growing our young people as it relates to piano lessons, ukulele lessons, guitar lessons. We diversify into tap, ballet, and then we get into a very exciting program, our Movies Under the Stars. We're averaging somewhere between 400 and 500 folks per evening on a six-evening movie schedule throughout the summer months, May and June. We have to take a little hiatus in July and August, just simply because of the monsoon seasons. And it's amazing how a movie screen becomes a very, very nice kite in doing so. All those fun things. This year, we were very excited with our Arts at the Center program, where we had a $15,000 donation in securing artwork, permanent artwork, here at the grounds. So that was very exciting. We had $6,700 in donations coming back into our Movies Under the Stars program that I mentioned earlier. Bradshaw Mountain High School hosted their first outdoor spring concert ever here at the Civic Center grounds at Theater on the Green. They had over 350 folks here. And a lot of the music was written by the students and the band director, so that was very exciting. In addition to that, aiding with festivals and other art-related activities, we secured over $2,000 in grants during the fiscal year as well. So these are some of the photographs that we have here in the upper corner, some of our concerts that were hosted here on the stage, as well as our artwork throughout the Art at the Center program. Our Community and Outdoor Division is an extremely diverse program and activity. We're very excited about all the opportunities out there. I will plug some fun here, as well as with our Arts Division. We are always in the hunt for instructors. And we encourage everyone to share their base knowledge with the community and be able to grow the opportunities that we have out here. We have our youth basketball program that we're very, very pleased with. And from a historical perspective, a number of the young people that have come up through that program have gone on to high school athletic careers. So we're very pleased with that program and all the services that they offer with us. Thousands of folks coming through the program, young and old, have enjoyed activities such as health and wellness, weight training programs. We have gone on discovery trips for enrichment, dance classes, yoga, you name it. Tons of fun is found through our community programs. But the only way that we get better and provide more services comes through the investment of our community members in teaching those classes. For the last several years, we've hosted an ice skating program, utilizing opportunities made available to us at the Prescott Valley Events Center. Over the course of the years, we've been doing very well. The community has highly embraced this program. We've seen continual growth across all platforms. This past year, we had nearly 9,000 ice skating rentals, which is pretty exciting because we were challenging our record from the 15, 16-year. But again, we maintained or saw steadied growth and improvement through all of those services. Our days when we began started with up to 105 days of opportunity. That has gone down to 62, which means we reinvested, well-tooled ourselves in delivering opportunities that we had there. This year, we had a very exciting opportunity where we were able to provide a total of 194 hours in that service, which is a downward trend, but an exciting trend in regards to how much people focused and attended our services that were out there on the ice. And I know Larry out there had a lot of fun, so he helped police the ice for us a time or two, but he also helped some new speed records out there. So I didn't know he was in the Winter Olympics trials, so he joined us out there. Lots of fun in doing such. Our Parks Division, as you know, is very diverse. With the opportunities that are out there, you heard a lot of discussion in regards to Fane Park this evening, the opportunities for fishing that are available to us. We have 27 parks in total, maintaining 250 acres in developed parkland, as well as 171 acres of passive or open space that's available to us. Our amenities are very diverse. We have 39 Ramadas, 20 soccer fields, 18 playgrounds, as well as supporting restrooms for that, horseshoe pits, dozen baseball, softball diamonds, basketball courts, skate parks, pavilions, on and on and on. The incredible part of our infrastructure is we also have 9.5 miles of trails. And in supporting all of our developed park properties, we have irrigation system that consists of well over 2,000 irrigation sprinkler heads, 260 valves- consists of well over 2,000 irrigation sprinkler heads, 260 valves, 4.2 miles worth of mainline and 14 and 1/2 miles of lateral lines that our folks maintain out there. This year, you saw the additions of Bodwell Edwards Park. Very excited about that facility coming onboard. Already a very highly-used park for folks that walk. We've made excellent investments in athletic program, our athletic field, as well as support with high-efficiency LED sports lighting. So I think that's going to be a ever-continuing upward-trending park location. In addition to that, we saw several thousand dollars' worth of donations coming into American Legion Park from our friends of Prescott Valley Parks and Recreation Foundation, and we saw a reinvestment and redevelopment of that particular park location. So we're very excited about all of those opportunities that come forward to us through our community. In addition to that, the Community Improvement Park for Summit Trails project was one this year along with Bob Edwards Park. So very happy to receive those accolades and continue to setting the trend for high-valued programs, services, and park amenities in doing such. We also, as one of our programs, for 14 years now, we've been a Tree City USA community. Our investments in this year, we saw 54 new trees come in with several of those, again, reinvestments back into the community, making donations for the Memorial Tree program. Our special events are large and varied. They work in great partnership with folks such as the Prescott Valley Chamber, where we had nearly 95,000 folks come through the Valley of Lights program. We also host a number of different youth activities. Your next presenter coming up tonight has enjoyed many of our different activities. You see this crazy guy with the big sunglasses on that happens to be Mr. Norm Davis with his daughter enjoying the evening, and I think he's preparing to do so tomorrow night as well, too, in doing those things. Several thousands of people are on hand for annual 4th of July fireworks, not to mention, then, what's soon coming up on March 24th is our Extravaganza event where literally 10,000 eggs are gone in less than five seconds if you put at it. So tons of fun in doing those things. One of the proudest moments that we have in our year is being host to the Healing Fields of Northern Arizona. This is held annually in remembrance of the victims of 9/11 and doing all of those fun things. So that's all the cool stuff. How do folks get involved? Well, of course, they volunteer. Again, as I mentioned earlier, classes, programs, trips, special events, that's what we're looking for. Folks that want to learn more about our programs and services can do so through the town website and see the entire catalog of services and opportunities there. We're always looking for volunteers. Again, as I mentioned, we had nearly $140,000 worth of support coming in from our community, and they can do so through any of our programs, adopting a park, commissions, special events, you name it. They are truly helping pay it forward here in Prescott Valley. They have a ton of benefits that are made available to us through individuals. We help with self-esteem, reliance. We help reduce stress, all of those good things. We benefit the community in helping connect families. We were mentioning that earlier in regards to that importance and value in growing our young people as well as that family dynamic, enhancing cultural understanding, supporting people of all ages. We help increase tourism dollars. We talked about those economic impacts through sports tournaments and other activities and the retention of local businesses that are seeking that valued park and recreation system and coming into our community. We benefit the environment, i.e. cleaner water, better fisheries, all of those good things, preserving wildlife ecosystems. But I think the most important things that I would ask those watching and with us this evening, that we do more than just provide leisure venues and activities. We provide for a lifetime of memories. Ask everyone to hearken back, and do you remember meeting your friends at the park swing? Do you remember swimming until your entire body was wrinkled, perhaps hitting the game-winning single, fighting the ants at the family picnic there in the park? If you remember any of those and more, then we have succeeded in doing our job. Whether you choose to live healthy, live happy, live with adventure, live in peace, the desire to live well is inherent among those who choose to live, work, and play in Prescott Valley. Thank you all for your support of the Parks and Recreation Department, not only council but our listening and viewing citizens out there. Engage with us more. We have more opportunities, and we encourage everyone to participate. Thank you.
Questions, anyone? Mary, you got something?
I just, you know, Brian, I just appreciate everything that you and the department does and watching and looking at all those pictures. It's just, it's very warming to see how the community enjoys this great town that we have developed in the last 40 years. It's fabulous. Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Any other questions, Mary? Laura?
What I've always been aware of, but what your presentation just clearly showed is what a family-friendly community we have been, we are, and we will continue to be. And I want to thank you. That was a really outstanding presentation.
Marty?
Yeah. Just thank you for doing the job that you do and having the staff that you have. Parks are so important to a community. It's an inexpensive way for a parent to bring their children, have a good time, and it doesn't have to cost them an arm and a leg. You know, it's something that is easily affordable for them if they, you know, they could bring their own food and beverages and have a little picnic, play a little games. It's just a great way to be there, and, you know, just rolling around on the grass is just a fun, healthy thing to do, so why not?
Any other questions or comments? Mary, something else?
Oh, no. He said rolling around in the grass, and I said with the ants.
And your uncle.
Thank you. Are they coming?
Yeah, I just wanted to lend my two cents' worth as well. And, you know, I've always said I think that Parks and Recreation is really the face of the town of Prescott Valley, because it gives a lot of variety in terms of opportunities to get involved with. And I think the way you end this presentation says it well, you know, living healthy, happy, and in peace, you can live, work, and play in Prescott Valley. So I think I take that to heart, and I think our residents really appreciate the investment we've made in terms of Parks and Recreation and hope to get bigger and better, and do love our new Bob Edwards Park. I think it's a jewel in our community.
Any other comments? Brian, I think the council appreciates what you're doing. Just keep it up.
I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Okay, we move on then to presentation, Glassford Hill Road intersection, safety study. Norm, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What I wanted to do for you tonight was give you, bring to your attention that the final report is ready for the Glassford Hill intersection safety study. Council may be aware, that was a thorough review of Glassford Hill Road, the 3.6 miles from Highway 69 to Highway 89A. Talked to you back in November when we awarded the safety study to Lee Engineering and also Davin Associates. They work in concert together on this study, was that the character Glassford Hill Road is significantly changed as we continue to grow, and it's very, very timely to look at safety, to make sure safety is always at the forefront, in addition to what I call mobility and access throughout that corridor. So this particular study, as you see here, is very thorough, looks at all kinds of things. Part of the, what the study looked at was the three-year crash history, and it looked at the existing traffic signs for safety, make sure we adequately signed or we need to make some changes with some of the characteristics of it changing from more of a rural road to more of an urban section, better access points and the like. Speed data was done, traffic counts, and the biggest thing, too, was look at operational analysis, because ultimately, we want to move traffic on Glassford Hill Road safely but move it very efficiently, too. So this is very much a comprehensive study. And just to give you, you know, a thumbnail, you know, some excerpts from the study is that in 2006, we had 19,000 cars a day basically on Glassford north of Santa Fe, between Santa Fe and 89A. Well, now there's 27,000 cars a day. That corridor is basically running 27,000 cars a day. So if you've been around for a while, I think you see the difference. And what that difference in traffic means, unfortunately, I'd like to point at the council, more vehicles means more people have the instance to make mistakes, and there are crashes out there. What's important to me, we do stay in close touch with our police department, because they did bring our attention when there are crashes, is anything out of the ordinary. We looked at them. So what's interesting is, you know, we basically have 75 crashes a year, about a crash and a half per week that gets a citation. So this study looked at it to see if there's any particular thing that can be done, not only economically, but take a look to see if there's any changes that can be made. Getting back to the study itself, the study started back in November. We studied the four intersections. That I think council may recall here that they're, what we call, you've got the existing signalized intersections, but the four intersections you see in the exhibit are the ones that have a non-controlled access. That means that they've just got a stop condition, and they have, three of them have what's called a median crossover. So that is good for access, but you need to take a look at that. We wanted to make sure that we looked at the safety there and what can we do with mobility at these particular intersections. So those were the four focus points for this study to see if any recommendations could be made for any particular changes. All these exhibits I'm showing tonight, we're at the public meeting that we had on January 23rd. So when we got the final draft report, we like to always take it to the public and hear from the people that live close, witness it day in, day out. So it's always important to have an open house. And on the 23rd, we had probably 30 to 50 people showed up in the Crystal Meeting Room. I know a couple of you council people were there to look at the data and the outcomes. So it's always important, and that public input was put into the final report that you see here. One of the other exhibits we had at the public open house was, you see the lit-up spots there? Those are hotspots where accidents happen. Well, if you turned on the layer that showed the traffic signals, those are intersections, always the most high incident for crashes. But good news is a lot of those crashes are of minor nature and only particularly property damage and vehicle damage. So very intensive look at those particular intersections. Did want to point out the three intersections that have no access control. Now, the focus of the study being what we had at the other one was Granville Parkway South, Panther Path, and of course, the one at the Paveway-Frontage Road intersection you see in the bottom there. And this study goes into detail about what the crashes were and the severities and/or if there were injury accidents, and focus on those particular intersections. So with all this work that the consultant did, the other, there's three intersections that there was no recommendation at this point. We'll continue to monitor them for safety as traffic increases or if we see a higher incidence for accidents. But the one intersection at the bottom at Highway 69 at Paveway and the Frontage Road that doesn't have any intersection control, it's the consultant's recommendation, we need to add some access control there. This is an exhibit of what you could see implemented and recommended by the consultant. I call it a diamond, but the little green shape you see there would, really what the consultant found was that the traffic that tries to cross all nine lanes there is the incidence for the accidents. That's only about 7% of the vehicle trips in a day, but it's all of the accidents. So when he took a look at the data, when you look at alternative routes, if we implement some restrictions of turning movements, it's their recommendation that we implement this particular turning movement restriction. What you're looking at there, though, is this diamond, so to speak, in the middle stops the complete crossovers of all the lanes in addition to the lefts out of either Paveway on the east end or the Frontage Road on the west. But it does still allow, as you can see the movement there, that you would be allowed to turn lefts in at those off of the mainline Glassford Hill Road. So it allows that mobility, which is, you do want to have because mobility is very important. But what I'm leading up to is it would be staff's recommendation to support the engineer's recommendation to move forward with this particular access restriction to be implemented for better safety. The good news about the particular restrictions are, the report does detail out that there's very reasonable, close, alternative access if putting this restriction in place. So we're looking at Center Court being that alternative access for that particular access restriction on the Frontage Road or some of the adjacent roads. Prescott Valley is very well laid out for some alternative access that makes the safety really, puts safety at the forefront. So as part of this particular recommendation, we're probably looking at putting a protected left turn at Center Court and help with some of that mobility, and I really think it's a very reasonable recommendation to halt some of those accidents. So as I say, this is the only one that comes out of the report. This particular report does in a great amount of depth, but what it does do is give us a benchmark at this time, that we're always looking at safety for our residents, but as we continue to grow or see more traffic, we'll continue to monitor, look at mobility, look at safety as the forefront, but continue to keep Glassford Hill Road a very safe and efficient access for our businesses and our residents, for the residential residents. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the study.
Questions, anyone?
I just, I absolutely agree with that intersection there at Paveway and Glassford, right? Is that where, yeah, definitely that is a issue there. I avoid that at all costs to have to come out that way.
You know, Council, it's interesting, too, is with the not as many vehicle trips that make the crossing, people do make good, informed decisions. I think they're already taking those alternative routes to begin with. So when the study pointed out, when they put the cameras up, that it's only 7% of the vehicle trips, not many people taking it now, but those who do have the incidence for all the accidents. So it's very pointed on why that makes good sense to have that access restriction.
Marty?
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to mention also about Paveway. Having made that left turn off of Paveway to head down to Highway 69, that, there's a blind spot there that gets you almost every time if you're not careful. At one time, we were talking about the intersection of Granville Parkway and Glassford Hill and preventing that left-hand turn. So according to the study, they're still recommending that we leave it so that you could still make the left-hand turn and not cut it off?
That's correct. At this point in time, there has been some crashes there, but not anywhere you'd expect for the amount of traffic on the mainline Glassford Hill Road. So it's not their recommendation at this time to move with any access restrictions.
That will make a lot of people very happy.
Well, and that's what we heard from the public meeting, and I think the best I can tell from, you know, the majority of the feedback is these recommendations make good sense. Granville Parkway South is not going to be closed at this time, but it's important to point out as we continue to see that third lane put in, that would probably be the time that we'd need to put some extra restriction and restrict the lefts out, because there's just too many lanes of traffic and way too much incidents for crashes. So that could come in the future. No different if we've been around a while Glassford Hill Road, as I gave the tangibles of how much traffic has grown on there. That day will come, probably for Granville Parkway South, when that third lane is put in.
Yeah, well, fortunately for that intersection, there really isn't a huge blind spot, so you can see down as long as you're patient and willing to wait. But, yeah, it could be a tricky crossing. I know I've done it many times, so thank you.
Any other questions coming? Mary, another comment?
Oh, my phone is... Um, sorry. When you said patient and willing to wait, that's something that is very, it's not out there very much anymore, patient and willing to wait, so.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I think at this point, with the study complete and, of course, been on our website for the public to review, I will go ahead and put this recommendation into the budget if you're willing and move forward with that access restriction at Paveway-Frontage Road this current, next upcoming budget year, would be follow the recommendations.
We want it to work, Norm.
I think it will work.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? You got it, Mayor.
Okay, we move on to number nine, discussion, Boys and Girls Club expansion update. Brian?
Mayor and Council, it's been a great meeting, and I hate to go last and be a Debbie Downer, but as you're aware, we, I know, I have to do it. Last fall, we brought before you a bid award for an expansion of the Boys and Girls Club. Well, the low bid came in, is about $200,000 less than what our projected funding was at the time. That didn't include a flooring for the court either. So the Boys and Girls Club was going to attempt to raise some additional funds in the interim, and we were looking to raise about a half a million dollars, really, to build the building correctly. They've been aggressively pursuing options. They've talked to, you know, people down the valley, local people, and there is even, as of a few days ago, a sliver of hope that something might come through, but it's getting to the point where we're going to risk losing our grant funding if we don't move forward. We already have to ask for an extension to the grant timeline. So at this time, probably next week or so, we're going to, we've actually already talked to the architect about downsizing the building and then rebidding that project out. It's just come to the point where we've got to go forward with some kind of an action, so we wanted to give you an update on that. So it'll go essentially from... So it'll go essentially from what was going to be a full-size NBA court to more of a multipurpose-type facility. But we want to design it in a way where if funding ever comes through in the future, we can expand it to the original vision, and we can design it that way. There's no guarantees in this bidding environment what we'll get once we go up to bid again, but we'll keep our fingers crossed and do the best we can. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And there's still a chance, you know, within the next week or so, if we got a lead on some funding, we could make it happen, but it's not looking promising at this point.
Put it downer. Anyway...
Sorry. I like to come for you with good news most of the time, but...
What seems to be the issue relative to the bid? You know, is it, you know, is there something we can put our finger on to say, well, this is something that's just...
You know, we met with the low bidder about a month ago, and according to them, there was not one single thing that we could do to make this project work within the funding we had. Part of the issue is because we were using a CDBG grant to fund this project, partially fund this project. We're required to use Davis Bacon wages, and so when you have to pay welders 50 bucks an hour to come and weld on a metal building, it really adds to the cost. They were saying in some instances, it was adding 20 to 25% of the project cost. So that's one of the things that kind of hurt us.
By using CDBG money, you're adding 40 to 45% more to the cost. So if we were doing this project ourselves without federal dollars, we could have brought this in on budget. Guess what, folks? Not happening. Because you're using federal dollars because of the cost of administering it, as well as wages you have to pay. That's the cost of doing business.
Any other comments, Mike?
Well, just wondering, what is the level of participation right now by the Boys and Girls Club in terms of finance?
They were putting up about $400,000 of their own money that they've received from a prior donation, so they're heavily invested in the project as well.
Well, that's very good. Yeah, very nice. Got to bite the bullet, I guess.
Mary, you got a question? No?
No.
Anyone else?
Sorry.
Anything else, Ryan?
No. Again, we still want to make this happen. It's just not going to be to our original...
We want this to happen, so whatever we can figure out, make it work.
Okay, we'll get with the architect and...
Good, thank you.
Going on that rebidding process. So sorry to be a Debbie Downer. On the bright side of things, my six-year-old Corbin told me a few weeks ago he wants to go fishing for his seventh birthday, so I'm looking forward to some expanded fishing opportunities. I haven't been fishing in years, so I have to get on my fishing pole and go out to the lake.
Okay, I think we're about ready to adjourn. One thing, Larry, could you tell somebody to, instead of blowing in cold air, to blow in some warm air in this place?
Yes.
It was really miserable tonight.
Can we pay this?
Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.